Thank you, Mr. Manager. As we find ourselves in the midst of another Christmas season, I'm reminded of those familiar words of the Christmas story, "Fear not, for behold I bring you good tidings of great joy; join with me in prayer should you choose." Heavenly Father, as we near the end of another year, we ask that your presence be with us this evening as we go about the people's business. Help us to put away any anxiety about the future, for you have told us that we are not created with a spirit of fear, but one of power and of love and of a sound mind. Lord, as we mark the beginning of a new Board of Commissioners, we are reminded that we are one body with many parts. As we welcome David Williams to the Board, we ask that you utilize his wisdom and his talents to the benefit of our county. Help us all to reaffirm our trust in our institutions of government, our county administration and employees, in each other and ultimately in you, O God. As we begin a new year, help us to foster a spirit of trust. Help us each to be more concerned about what is right than being right, more about acting on ideas than about coming up with the idea, more about embracing future change than defending outdated positions, more about building a team than personal accolades, and more about recognizing contribution than being recognized for it. Lord, help us always to remember those with special needs at this time, the sick, the lonely, the hurting. Lord, we pray for all in health care who face the effects of the pandemic daily. Give them strength to battle on. As always, we pray for those who work to keep us safe in our lives, our liberties and our property. Watch over them and keep them safe. As we look towards 2021, we are not certain what circumstances we may face, but we pause tonight to give thanks in all circumstances, for we are assured that that is your will for us all. In Christ's name I pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and fraud.
This evening's meeting is our first organizational meeting since the November election. During this organizational meeting, I normally preside over a portion of the meeting as county manager so that we can swear in new commissioners and elect new officers of the Board. Even though Commissioner-elect Williams is not able to be here live tonight, we also want to make sure that he is duly sworn in to office. If you are observing the meeting and following along, there will be a variety of technical motions and votes at this meeting and the special meeting immediately following that will enable all that to happen while staying in compliance with the various laws, rules, procedures that govern our business meetings. In light of that, Chairman Simpson, would you like to bring the motion forward?
I would, Mr. Manager. Prior to the next agenda item, I would like to make a motion to suspend Rule Four of the Board's Rules of Procedure for this regular meeting.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion is approved. And now, because Rule Four has been suspended, I will yield the remainder of the meeting to Chairman Simpson, who will preside over the remainder of this regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The next item on the agenda is the administration of Oath of Office for Commissioners-Elect and the Register of Deeds. We will be conducting the oath of office for Commissioner-elect Richard Helms and Register of Deeds-elect Crystal Gillyard at this meeting. Commissioner-elect David Williams' oath of office will be conducted later in time during the special meeting, which immediately follows this meeting. Would Commissioner-elect Helms please come forward for his oath of office?
Do you, Richard B. Helm, Senior solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner for the County of Union, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Richard B. Helm, Senior solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Richard B. Helm, Senior swear that you will well and truly execute the duties for the office of Commissioner for the County of Union according to the best of your skill and ability according to laws, so help you God?
I will.
All right, would Register of Deeds-elect Crystal Gillyard please come forward for her oath of office?
Do you, Crystal D. Gillyard solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office of Register of Deeds for the County of Union, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Crystal D. Gillyard solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Crystal D. Gillyard solemnly swear that you will faithfully and truly, according to the best of your skill and ability, execute the duties of the office of the Register of Deeds for the County of Union and all things according to laws, so help you God?
I will.
If there's no objection, I would like to take, next take up the item on the agenda for elected officials' bonds. Elected positions of the sheriff and register of deeds are required by statute to maintain personal bonds. The action requested is for the approval of a bond for the sheriff in the amount of $5,000 and the register of deeds in the amount of $25,000.
Motion to approve bonds for the sheriff and register of deeds?
We have a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Prior to taking up any further items on the agenda, I would like to make a motion that we postpone the remainder of the agenda items, including the swearing-in of Commissioner-elect Williams, to the immediately following special meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners, and also to suspend Rule Ten of the Board of Commissioners as informal comments will be received at this evening's special meeting rather than at this one. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I now move to adopt and add Rule Thirty-Four, Electronic Meetings, and Rule Thirty-Five, Meetings With Public Electronic Participation, to the Board's Rules of Procedure for application at the special meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners immediately following this meeting.
Motion to accept.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This time I move to adjourn the December 7th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I now call the December 7th, 2020 Special Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to order. First item on the agenda is related to Rule Thirty-Four, Electronic Meetings, and Rule Thirty-Five, Meetings With Public Electronic Participation, to the Board's Rules of Procedure. I move to affirm the adoption and application of Rule Thirty-Four, Electronic Meetings, and Rule Thirty-Five, Meetings With Public Electronic Participation, to the Board's Rules of Procedure to apply to this special meeting. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will now have a roll call vote on the motion. Sorry, got ahead of myself. Commissioner Rushing, in favor? Commissioner Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Rape?
Aye.
Chairman Simpson, aye. Next item on the agenda is the administration of the oath of office for Commissioner-elect David Williams. Commissioner-elect Williams is participating remotely this evening. His wife Emily will be administering his oath of office.
Thank you very much.
Do you, David Williams solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner for the County of Union, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, David Williams solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, David Williams swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Commissioner for the County of Union according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me well? Mr. Williams, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Let me put back on my headset.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. At this time, I would move to take up the election and oath of officers in accordance with Rule Four of the Board's Rules of Procedure. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote on the motion. Mr. Helms?
Aye.
Mr. Rushing?
Aye.
Mr. Rape?
Aye.
Mr. Simpson?
Aye.
And, Mr. Williams? Since we are now conducting this portion of the meeting in accordance with Rule Four, I will turn it over to Manager Watson for the next item.
The next item on the agenda is the election of officers. I will now open the floor for nominations for chairman. We will vote on the nominations in the order in which they are received. The first nominee to receive a majority of votes will be appointed chairman.
Manager Watson, I would like to place a nomination, Richard Helms, for chairman.
Commissioner Rape has nominated Commissioner Helms for chairman. Do we have any other nominations? If none, I will entertain a motion that the nominations be closed.
I've moved that to be closed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I believe we need a roll call, Mr. Manager.
Is a roll call vote?
Yes.
I got you, I got you. Commissioner Helms, how do you vote on the motion?
Aye.
Commissioner Rape, how do you vote on the motion?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Rushing?
Aye.
And Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Thank you. We will vote, since there's only one nomination, we will vote now on the nomination of Commissioner Helms for chairman. This will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Rushing, how do you vote? Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Rape, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Helms, how do you vote? Congratulations, Commissioner Helms. You are the chair of the Union County Board of Commissioners. The next item on the agenda is the election of vice chairman. I will now open the floor for nominations for vice chair. We will vote on the nominations in the order in which they are received. The first nominee to receive a majority of votes will be appointed as vice chair.
Manager Watson?
Commissioner Simpson?
I'd like to place a nomination, Commissioner Rape.
Commissioner Rape has been nominated for vice chair. Do we have any other nominations? If none, I will entertain a motion that the nominations be closed. Commissioner Helms has made the motion that the nominations be closed. Commissioner Rushing, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Rape, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Helms, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Williams, how do you vote? Congratulations, Commissioner Rape. You are now the vice chair. Excuse me?
That was just a motion to close.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. I don't do this every day. We will now vote on the motion, the nomination of Commissioner Rape for vice chairman. We will have a roll call vote. Commissioner Rushing, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Rape, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Helms?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams? Right, now, congratulations, Commissioner Rape. You are now the vice chair of the Union County Board of Commissioners. If we could, please have Commissioner Helms come forward to be administered the oath
Do you, Richard B. Helm, Senior solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office as chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Richard B. Helm, Senior solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Richard B. Helm, Senior swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Commissioner Rape, would you please come forward for the administration of the oath of office?
Do you, Dennis Rape solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office as vice chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Dennis Rape solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Dennis Rape swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of vice chair of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Union according to the best of your skill and ability according to laws, so help you God?
Can we entertain a motion to suspend Rule Four?
Motion to suspend Rule Four.
Suspend Rule Four. Commissioner Simpson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Rushing, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Helms?
Aye.
Commissioner Rushing? And Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
With Rule Four now suspended, Chairman Helms, with the officers now elected and duly sworn, I turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, sir. And as we start off with our next agenda meeting, first I'd like to welcome Commissioner Williams to the Board, and we look forward to working with you for several years now.
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is employee bonds. The finance director and the tax administrator are required by statute to maintain personal bonds and are responsible for securing these personal bonds. Union County has undertaken the responsibility for placement of these bonds. The action requested is for the approval of a bond for finance director in the amount of $100,000 and the tax director, tax administrator in the amount for $60,000. Can I have a motion, please? Commissioner Rushing?
Motion to approve bonds for finance director and tax administrator?
Okay, any discussion? And we'll have to continue taking the roll call votes, my understanding. Commissioner Rushing?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rape?
Aye.
And myself, aye, and Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So, next we have informal comments. Lynda, do we have any informal comments?
Aye.
Okay. And after informal comments, since we have none, the next item is additions to deletions and adoptions of the agenda.
Chairman Helms, I'd like to move Item Twenty-One from the consent agenda to, I believe it's old business. This relates to the timing of charges of system development fees as well as proposed ordinance changes for the extension ordinance.
Okay.
I'd like to move that off the consent agenda to the, to old business.
All right, there's a motion to move Item Twenty-One to old business? Modify the agenda, all in favor? Any discussion, excuse me?
Hold on.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rushing?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, after that, we have our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt as amended, the removal of Item Twenty-One?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Rape?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Commissioner Rushing?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
That takes us to old business, and under old business is Item Twenty-One. Mr. Manager, would you help us with this particular Item Twenty-One?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If I could have Mr. Matthews and Mr. Yi to the podium. These two gentlemen are most familiar with this item and would be glad to answer any questions that the Board may have of the item. I believe it would be helpful for Mr. Matthews to give you a synopsis of the background for the actions that are being requested.
May I ask a question just quickly before we, before they start?
Yeah.
Because we, because of my absence at the last meeting, we were not able to do, it was a four-o vote. Is this the first reading then?
This will be the second reading.
So even though I wasn't here to affirm it unanimously, this would be the second reading?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so to give you a synopsis or background on this, the system development fees previously were to be collected at time of plat. That was a legislative change that happened some time ago. The General Assembly then changed the legislation to have that system development fees, beginning in January of 2021, will be collected at the time of building permit application. That's significant because now our funds were received when a plat comes in, and that's multiple lots in the plat. Now it could be a lot of the time because it's when they apply for an actual building permit application, not when the actual infrastructure is put in the ground, it's when a building permit for the structure is being applied for. So in order to comply with the legislation, we have to amend our water and sewer extension ordinance. We have an ordinance that provides for how capacity is allotted to a developer or development. And so in that ordinance, we have to make the change to, number one, talk about that it is for building permit application at that time, and number two, for it to take effect in January of 2021. As a means of having our builder and development community understand the impact that would have on them, we convened a group of local builders and developers to discuss the item, have them understand our current policy and our current ordinance and how the change would affect them. Currently, there's a five-year capacity limitation when you apply for water and sewer, water and sewer extension. So what that basically means is that you have five years to complete the infrastructure within the phase that you submit for system development fee approval. And that was fine during the plat process because most of the time, the infrastructure was in the ground and accepted, and everything was okay, and it was working. But five years under a building permit would likely lead to some developments not being completed and capacity at that point in time being run out because the five years would have extended, would have gone, been out completely. So development community felt like an extension would be warranted in case they could not meet that five-year timeframe to get the infrastructure in ground and apply for all the building permits within the development. We felt that was a reasonable suggestion by the builders and the developers, and we have put in place some- and we have put in place some recommended extension language within the ordinance. There's also some language in the ordinance that talks about if transfer of the development occurs, there is some information that must be provided to the new owner or new developer, and there's some information they have to provide to us to show that they have documented, that they've made that information available to the new owner or new developer. I'll be happy to answer any questions, or our Public Works Administrator, Kyung Yi, can answer any questions as well.
Mr. Matthews, in order to apply for the three-year extension, the builder also has to show progress that, there's some provisions about showing substantial progress toward completing the project in order to qualify for the extension?
Yes, sir, my, I'm sorry, I did not give detail on that. So there's a possibility of two extensions. The first extension is for up to three years, and the development must have reached at least 50% building permits that have been applied for, for the project, as well as paying system development fees for up to 50% of the project. If they've met that threshold, but they cannot meet the five-year turnaround time, they can make application for an extension for three years. Now, in the event that they cannot make further progress after that three years to get to 50% of what's remaining, then they can apply for a second three-year extension. That one is really up to the staff, is the way that's set up, the ordinance has, that we will evaluate what the request is and how that request affects the development. So they can get three years with 50%, and then they can ask for an additional three years if they have not met that additional 50% that's left. And that might be not clear, but the best way I can explain it right now.
And this change is due to state statute requirement that we must?
So the change that is due to the state requirements is the date at which it takes effect, and the fact that it's at building permit application. The extension requirements are not state mandated, but because we have a capacity limitation of five years in our ordinance, that's why the extension language has been requested to be put in there.
Any further, Commissioner Simpson?
Mr. Matthews, just to make sure I understand?
David?
The part that is required by state statute is the timing and collection of the system development fees, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. The part that is not required by changes in state statute regard the period of time before which reserve capacity is clawed back by the county, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And the current clawback period is five years? And under this proposed ordinance, the potential clawback period would be 11 years, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And for the two, three-year extension periods, the first three-year period, the district shall give an extension if 50% of the fees and applications have been made, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And for the second three-year period, that is extended at the discretion of the Water and Sewer District, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And under current ordinance, the reserve capacity runs with the land, is a pertinent or runs with the land once all the system development fees are paid, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And under the proposed ordinance, the reserve capacity would be a pertinent or run with the land if at least 50% had been paid for, correct?
So it is actually by lot, to the way it's written, is as each lot is paid. That's how the capacity is allotted. Now, once you have reached, let's say, you have reached over 50% of the complete project, then there is sort of a guarantee that capacity remains.
Okay. And under current ordinance, let's say, capacity, reserve capacity is clawed back, the liquidated damages are equal to the system development fees that are collected, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. So if under, under the proposed statute, let's say, we go from five years to, let's say, we have a builder that doesn't complete the development, and after 10 years, that capacity is clawed back, the liquidated damages would still be just those same system development fees, correct?
It would be those that have been collected, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I think I understand, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Simpson?
Well, my, my intent was to have Mr. Williams since he added it. See what his thoughts were, so it worked out well. I guess, I guess it is a little bit above my pay grade in terms of understanding this. I guess my concern is, we want to maintain some type of normalcy and some accountability from the developer, but at the same time, we don't want to put them in the throes of an economic downturn or something?
Yes, sir.
And give them time to rebound from that and continue with their development. We know what it's like to see pipes sticking out of ground on acres and acres out there with no building going on. We've been down that road.
Yes, sir.
So what is staff's opinion in terms of the most flexibility, or the most continuity, I guess, maybe?
So, in our discussions with the developers and builders, they're the ones who raised this issue, and that was the purpose for that discussion with them, to understand how it affects them and also how it affects the county. Capacity is limited, so obviously, we're, we want to protect it. We want to make sure that those that intend to use it are using it, and that it is not being just held on to for some future purpose. The developers liked having the option of an extension because they understood that capacity is important for us to protect, and they want to make sure that they can use it just as much as anyone else. We do think that this is a, is a good compromise. Honestly, we're an anomaly in the state. Because we have limited capacity, when we're collecting capacity fees at building permit, that means there's a long lag between the time that the development starts and the development finishes, and we get system development fees. Other state, other places around the state, they don't have capacity issues, so it doesn't really matter to them necessarily if they collect the money at building permit. We're a little different. So we recognize that we were going to need to have something where the development community could accept it and not have this sort of a push and pull against the home builders and the developers. So we think it's a fair compromise. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, sure, thanks.
Commissioner Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some of the concerns with listening to what you were talking about. Commercial versus residential. This is something I've had commercial developers come up and say, you know, our projects sometimes take longer for approval, development, you know, than a residential subdivision, finding tenants and things like that. Is there any special protections for commercial, which, economic development-type conditions that we would, that we wouldn't lose that ability to have those developments come in if a residential builder had already got the capacity, or?
The, the way that the system development fees are structured is for subdivided new development. Generally, commercial developments are not subdivisions. They may create some out parcels, but they're generally one parcel. And often, they don't require an extension of water and sewer. So the ordinance actually has a provision, so that if you're adjacent to water and sewer, your capacity is protected as soon as you apply for a building permit. As soon as you apply for a building permit, you have capacity. If an extension is required to serve that development, but it is not a subdivided piece of property, you have to submit basically a site plan, and we have to review it. As long as we're comfortable with it, then we can issue a capacity letter at that point in time. So they're treated a little bit different than residential because they're technically not usually subdividing property.
One other concern when you were describing it is that staff would have the ability to make the decisions of who can do it and who can't.
Yes, on the second one.
What helps, what helps make that completely fair, rather than subjective to, you know, because, you know, we could have a developer say, well, the staff doesn't like me, you know, and they don't want to help me. And what keeps us out of legal issues? What keeps us where we can be arbitrary with one versus the other? Do we have a clear set of ground rules in this that?
That's a good question. We, we don't have a specific set of guidelines at this point in time for what we would use. It is our intention to develop that so that we have a specific set of criteria that we would evaluate for that second set of requests. So that's a very good point. We don't have that at this point in time.
Would it be better to wait to vote on it until we do have that, or?
Well, I, you, number one, the law takes effect January. So we're going to need to make sure that we have at least something in effect for this to continue. Because remember, we do have to start collecting these fees at building permit in January of 2021. And as a matter, our ordinance is what we govern things by. So we will need some action from the board in order to make that, make that transition. Is that necessarily tonight? That's up to the board if you want to wait. But you really are going to need to do something before January so that we can actually make sure we meet the letter of the law for the, for the changes.
Could, could you put those assurances in place before the next meeting on December 21st?
I believe we could have a set of guidelines, and the board could feel, we could bring those to you, and then you could say whether you're comfortable with those.
Yeah, and that's, that's like I said, just, you know, when I look at how arbitrary it could be, and if you feel like it's a good idea, I definitely would feel better voting for it if I knew there were some guidelines in place.
Sure. If I may add something, so we are talking about the second extension, the second three-year extension? So, because the first is set on the 50% completion. So we're, right now, if you voted on it, we'd be about eight years away from seeing a developer ask for that second extension. We have time to develop a set of, you know, objective guidelines that you can, you can use. The experience that we would get, maybe from the first, you know, round of extensions that developers might ask for after the five-year period, might help inform whatever guidelines we, we develop. So we can certainly generate a set of guidelines and try to bring it to you at the next meeting. But I also think that there's a lot of time for us to bring back something before the board, before we're ever in a situation where we're going to have to, either at the staff level or at the management level, have to make a decision on any sort of extension for the second three-year period.
Mr. Ray?
Oh, you, I think you answered my question. The current clawback period was five years, but now it's five with three more.
Three-year extension, yes, sir.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we vote on it tonight and let staff in Public Works and our legal team bring it to the CIP meeting in late January, early February, as far as the guidelines for the second three-year period. Because you are right, we're actually looking at three years longer than the clawback period is right now. So, and I'm sure we would be fair because, as I've talked to several people about this, we don't want polka dotted subdivisions, we want them build out, so. Because once that system is given to us, it's our responsibility to maintain.
Yes, sir.
So we want a house at every tap. So I think we would be, so I'll, I'll make my motion to let's vote on it tonight and approve it as written.
Mr. Chairman? Quick, quick question. Was it three years or six years, because?
It's, it's three years for the first extension, which has specific guidelines?
Right, and the second?
Three, and a second three years, which is, as you pointed out?
So we're not voting on the second six years?
Well, I think Commissioner Ray is asking that you vote, vote on the ordinance as presented, and that we bring you at the CIP meeting that we will have in Public Works, either late January, February, the actual guidelines for how we will implement the second request for exemptions.
And at that time, we could amend it if the majority of the board didn't like it.
Yes, the ordinance is the board's ordinance. So at any point in time, you can amend your ordinance, as long as we follow the notice requirements.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance of the Union County Board of Commissioners, amending the Union County Code and Union County Water and Sewer Extension Ordinance to address collection and timing of system development fees. This amendment was on the consent agenda on November the 16th, 2020 because the amendment required the boards, all five board members to vote in the affirmative on the first reading. It is being placed on the December 7th meeting for a second reading, and does not require unanimous vote on this reading.
Okay, do we have discussion? Further discussion? Commissioner Rushing?
So we don't require unanimous vote on this to afford to go through? I, I think, I'm not going to support it just because, again, I want to make sure that we have those protections in place before I would vote for it, to begin with. But, but we don't have to have a unanimous vote to do that?
I think, I think, I think Lee brought a very valid point. I'd rather you not rush, try to have something in two weeks. Take your time and have a solid recommendation for amendment to the policy. All right, we have a motion? Any further discussion?
As the, as the proposed ordinance is, as it stands now, I don't feel like I can support it. I feel like from a five-year clawback period to potentially an 11-year clawback period with eight years more or less guaranteed is pretty generous. I, I do agree certainly that the part of this that is driven by state statute, we need to approve certainly by the next meeting before the first of the year. But as, as this proposal ordinance stands now, I don't feel like I can, I can support it.
Okay, we have to take a roll call vote, so I take yours as a no, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Okay, it passes three to two. Okay. That pretty much covers our business tonight. Mr. Manager, time for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Commissioner Simpson noted, we are in the holiday season. We'd like to remind everyone that the Union County Christmas Bureau is open and accepting donations. They, they have, there are many needs in our community. They have accepted quite a few donations at this point, but there's always the need for more. This is a service that we provide through our Department of Social Services to the community, and it makes a difference in children's lives every year. So I would recommend to everyone to please play a part in our Christmas Bureau, whether through donation of your time or purchases that you make for Christmas presents for young children in our community that would otherwise go without. The next thing that I would like to bring to the board's attention has to do with the, our capital planning process. Right now, we are tentatively, and you will receive additional information about this, we are tentatively planning to hold a work session on January the 11th. That would be a Monday in which capital programs are presented to the board. We are, we would not be asking for approval of a CIP or additional funding of any capital projects at that meeting. That is simply providing that information at that time. And we plan as staff to bring back on a regular board agenda. Shortly thereafter, CIP for your approval, along with any amended. back on a regular Board agenda shortly thereafter, CIP for your approval along with any amended funding streams that are needed for those projects. So just for information, we're, we're looking at January 11th for the information meeting to the Board of County Commissioners, and then we'll bring back the CIP and associated ordinances shortly thereafter.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams, your final comments?
Yes, I'd like to offer a number of thanks. First and foremost, I'd like to first thank the voters of Union County for electing me, and I know this is an assumption of a public trust, and I just want to say that I accept that public trust humbly and with great seriousness. And I will approach this job in the way that it deserves to be done, and I just ask for God's help in, in keeping me, keeping me to that obligation. I'd also like to thank the staff of Union County and my other county commissioners for accommodating me today. I know a virtual meeting is not ideal for my first meeting, but I am in COVID quarantine at present, and I just very much want to thank all of you for accommodating me, as well as staff. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Helms on his reelection, and also like to congratulate him on being elected chairman. I'd like to congratulate you, Commissioner Rape, on your election as vice chair. I very much look forward to working with all of you to achieve the very best results for Union County, and I'm, I'm quite excited at the prospect of, of working together, and let's get started.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Russian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to Commissioner Williams on his election, congratulations to Chairman Helms and Vice Chairman Rape. Would also like to ask my fellow commissioners and staff if we could consider a Board of Governors meeting prior to our next County Commissioner meeting so that we can discuss the rate increase scheduled for January of 2021. It's my understanding if there's any actions to be taken on it, we have to do it as a Board of Governors first, and then do it in our role as commissioners second. So would like to have a discussion of that and, and the effects that COVID has taken in the last year on the economy and the citizens of Union County and, and any changes that we may consider. And thank your, please thank your wife, Commissioner Williams. Hope she gets well soon. Thank her for swearing you in. That worked out very nice to have a notary for, for a wife. So congratulations again, and please get well soon.
Thank you.
Commissioner Simpson?
Again, congratulations and welcome to Commissioner Williams. Congratulations to Commissioner Helms and Commissioner Rape on your election as our leadership. Look forward to this next year. And with that, I'll bid everyone a good evening.
Commissioner Rape?
Welcome aboard, Commissioner Williams, and thank everybody for your vote of confidence as vice chair. I look forward to working with everybody and moving this county forward as we have the two, past two years. Everybody be careful, and God bless.
Okay, I'd like to start by saying again, welcome, Commissioner Williams. We look forward to working with you and hope you come out of your quarantine well. So we look forward to having you on the board.
I'd like to thank, I, I as well appreciate the citizens of Union County giving me another opportunity to serve. I look forward to it. We have a fantastic staff, a very effective, transparent staff that is a real pleasure to work with, and I'm looking forward to the next seven years. And thank you, my peers, for honoring serving as your chair. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. I guess we have to do the roll call too, don't we? David, you, your vote on the adjourn?
I think he's muted.
David?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Okay. We've, we've got a motion to adjourn, and your vote, please?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Russian?
Aye.
Myself, I concur.
Aye.
Okay, with that, wish everyone a good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.